You just hit that button. That's all you do.
Is it going now?
Call for session February fourteenth, twenty sixteen. Item one is a public input. Citizens may address the council in the item. City business is not on tonight's agenda. Any other address?
Herb Wilkie, ten seventeen, seven thousand. The honor, council members, just thought I'd stop by tonight and give you a little report on our turkey shoot on Sunday. Weather was superb, like you know. We started at nine o'clock, we were done at one thirty. We had identified thirty different shooters. We shot twenty-five rounds plus an Annie Oakley round. We had nine people buy insurance and we only paid out two, so a lot of people won their own meat, including yours truly. And we threw seven hundred-plus birds that day. We ran out, so we got to buy more for next time.
Herb, you sound a lot more excited about it now that you're winning.
I do, but the problem is I pay for the insurance and then I don't get to use it. Anyway, it's fine, so.
Thanks.
You guys are still welcome to come down next time and join in, so.
Thank you. Any others? Seeing the night of two general items. Mr. Reese Wellhaven, circus exchange club, update.
Brought handouts for everybody with some pictures, since I didn't have that last time, so. Uh, Lee Wellhaven, I reside at forty-six thirty-seven Napdow Road. It does sound like a brown-noser, but I have been to a few of these meetings at two, several of the council meetings in Billings, so I can sincerely say I appreciate all the hard work that you do and taking time out of your life to serve the community, so I just appreciate that. Uh, I've been here a couple of times to talk about the exchange clubs. Uh, we are launching one here in Laurel. We've had a couple of informational meetings. We had actually last week over at Casey's Palace. We had ten people attend the first night and fifteen the second night, so we have twenty-five people so far uh, that have expressed interest in joining our club. There's probably another handful or so that couldn't make the meeting. So I just wanted to kind of give you an update on what's happening so that you're aware. Um, we are America, what we turn on American Service Club. We serve veterans and veterans' projects, the prevention of child abuse and neglect, youth programs and community service projects. Um, I did want to, uh, David Keyes, as many of you know, David is with the Rotary Club and he's also obviously with the Laurel Outlook. He has been very helpful and instrumentally came to our first meeting, was nothing but positive and really encouraging people to join our group. We actually put our meetings in the Laurel Outlook for us, uh, which I did not prompt him or ask him to do so, so really a fine individual. Uh, but he has really seen the need that the clubs that are here just can't fill all the needs that are in Laurel, so he's excited to have us. Uh, J.C.'s, we've spoke with those folks. Uh, they've asked for some help, in particular with the street dance over the third and fourth of July. Uh, so they've been very open-minded and we've, and I think I touched on this before, but really been trying to lay some good groundwork and do some homework. We really don't want to step on anybody's toes as far as the other service clubs are concerned. We really want to compliment what it is that they do. And then lastly, I did actually speak with the American Legion Group a couple of weeks ago, had thirty gentlemen there, uh, which was great. They were again very, very welcoming to our group. And so anyway, all things pointing positive. So I just wanted to touch base on a few projects just to give you an idea of what it is that we do. So, um, if you go to the second, your next page, I'm sure plenty of you have looked at the next page, basically it looks like this. There's a picture of my lovely wife there on the left and a friend of ours on the right. This is at a parade, we do a couple of parades over in Billings. Uh, one, the Holiday Parade, and second, the St. Patty's Day Parade. This particular parade, you can see they're holding, um, small U.S. flags. Every one of these parades, we hand out over ten thousand U.S. flags. Um, to me, this seems kind of like a natural fit on the Fourth of July here in Laurel. And so again, something that the groups of people that we spoke with last week were excited about. Obviously promotes veterans and honors America and obviously gets kids excited about their country. So that's just a little, a little snippet about that. The second, the next page, the next picture, you will see, uh, this is over a thousand U.S. flags, large flags, planted at Park Three Golf Course. This is what we originally called a healing field. Uh, some people will call them a nine-eleven remembrance field, fields of honor, all kinds of different terms for them. Uh, but this is again, just to raise awareness about Americanism, our country. And this particular event, we actually sold those flags to sponsors, uh, so they could honor somebody that had passed and served in a, for our country. And obviously had a thousand flags, you can imagine, we did, we did very, very well with that project. Uh, again, with the National Cemetery here, uh, people like Richard Closey, who is the head of the American Legion here, excited about what we could possibly do together, so hopefully that's again helpful. The next page, you'll see, uh, this is Commissioner Kennedy, former Commissioner Kennedy, in front of what we call a Freedom Shrine. This was over-installed last year over at the new VA Clinic over by, on the west side of town, by the Ribbon Shop House and the Montana Club right over there. This was a ceremony, you can see all the documents on the back, you can't see what those documents are, but I can tell you these are all the important U.S. documents that we all know and love. Declaration of Independence, Articles of Confederation, et cetera. So our club pays for the installation and pays for those documents. And then we have a ceremony and we, again, we're honoring veterans and honoring what they've done for our country. So just another example of something that we could do here. We typically try to install these at government buildings and at schools. And I'm going to go quickly, I know we're running out of time. The next page, you will see some students in front of another Freedom Shrine. These are students over in Billings that we recently honored for what we call the Youth of the Month Scholarship Program. These students, along with many others, apply for scholarships based on grades, community service, uh, just being well-rounded and community-focused. Uh, this is just a picture of those students. Uh, side note, last week when I did have our meeting over here at Casey's Palace, one of the gentlemen had to bring his daughter to the meeting because, uh, I don't think she had place to go, so she tagged along with him. She's a local high school student over here at Laurel High and she heard me talking a lot like I am tonight. And she asked if they could start a club, just kind of had a love, if they could start a club over at the high school. So we have done that over in Billings, they call them a youth Excel Club, so it's just basically like a mini exchange club, but at the high school. And so I don't believe there's a key club over there, so we have had some teachers and some administrators express interest because again, we want to not only serve the community, but we also love to work with the youth and have them do some, some community services as well. So having her say that was very, very encouraging. The next page, you will see a picture like this. This is just a couple that's in our club, one of the couples in our club over in Billings. Uh, you can't really tell a whole lot unless I explain it, but basically they're shopping for a little child who over Christmas time has, typically these children have no hats, gloves, mittens, boots, all those kinds of things that they do have. They're either see-through jackets because they are worn out, or number two, they don't fit because they're hand-me-downs. So we, we team up the Salvation Army and we do what they call dress a child. This particular day, we dress sixty children over Christmas. Uh, and again, the, the club members are there just volunteering their time to, to help out those children, so a great project. Lastly, you'll see on the very last page, this is what we call a Book of Golden Deeds Award. This is basically honoring, um, typically as senior citizens, but not always. Uh, people who have given a lot to the community, do their volunteer efforts. These three people were honored this past year with a ceremony and plaque, and I think we got them gift certificates to go out and eat dinner, that type of thing. But again, really honoring those people that have given selflessly to the community, which a lot of times they don't get a lot of thanks. So hopefully again, that's, that's helpful. Um, then the last page, you'll see that we do have one, one more informational meeting coming up on the twenty-second, which is next Wednesday. Again, at Casey's Palace, uh, I would imagine we'll have well over thirty, maybe upwards of forty people there. Uh, the great thing now is everybody's got a lot of energy behind it, they want to know when we're going to meet, where we're going to meet, what projects are we going to work on, uh, what fundraisers can we do? I did ask the group what kinds of things they want to support. Obviously, I think everybody seems to be excited about the pool project that you guys are all working on. Uh, many of them mentioned putting up new lights over at the baseball stadium with the Dodgers. Uh, some people talked about backpack programs, so I mean, the list goes on and on. And that was all out of a, really a five-minute conversation about projects, so I anticipate that that list will, will grow. So I've talked long enough, but I just wanted to at least really give you some details on what it is that we're trying to accomplish here in Laurel. This is not a Billings club that's in Laurel, this is going to be a Laurel club run by Laurel people. I want Laurel to own it and early signs show that they're, they're, they're very excited about it, so I will open it up to questions at this time.
Any questions from Mr. Wellhaven? Councilman Monat's here.
Um, sir, this is just an inquiry, but have you ever thought of taking these documents and selling copies to the public?
Uh, oh, on the, uh, the freedom, uh, we have it, but it's probably not a bad idea. And thank you, not a bad idea, yeah, for sure.
Any other questions?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Fifth item. Appointment of Laurel Ambulance Service, Leah Robinson and Sean Davis.
Hello, I'm Sean Davis.
My name is Leah Robinson and I'm a brand-new EMT, um, fresh out of EMT School in Billings and I'm really excited to team up with Laurel Ambulance and get some good experience, um, with some good trainers and everything. And I'm really excited, I live just out of Hesper, so it's closer to home, um, and I'm looking forward to serving you guys.
And I just came out of EMT class two and I believe in giving back to, you know, the community. Uh, my brother in the past worked for Laurel Ambulance and told me how much he loved working for Laurel and the community and I kind of follow those paths and.
Great, I appreciate you coming out and talking to us and I'm sure we'll be looking at that appointment soon. Hopefully we never get to see it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing them out. Item three is executive review.
Great, the first thing I'm going to wonder, executive review tonight, is it ordinance for the subdivision regulations? Um, the subdivisions regulations were updated in the state objection that they grant from CDVG and that, and CPA. And obviously they have a lot of wealth of knowledge from CPA as you can see from the memo that is attached. Our former planner, Monica Fugger, did the subdivision update with our current planner, Noel E. So I will turn it over to the two of them to let you know what's changed and briefly go over what happened with these regulations.
Good evening, thank you for having both of us today. Um, yes, like Heidi said, we were awarded a CDVG planning grant. Um, and who better else to update the subdivision regulations than Monica? Um, she's obviously had a lot of experience working with them. Um, they haven't been updated since two thousand and six. And me being new to, um, you know, we kind of found some different things that we could make better, make easier for myself. Um, and Monica obviously has a lot of experience working with them too, so she was able to give some more input. And we've kind of kicked off, had several meetings back and forth, um, what's worked, what hasn't worked. We did have a public hearing at the Planning Board, um, January fifth. And this will be adopted by the county commissioners as well, um, coming up in the next couple of weeks too, so. Yeah, I'll let Monica talk about what she has been working on, she's done a lot.
When Noel says that I have knowledge, I really just had a list of complaints about what I didn't like about the regulations, so you can take that for what it is. But it's good to be back in front of all of you again, it's been a while. Um, like Noel said, we kicked this project off with the CDVG grant back in the, the summer in July. And so, um, we've had a couple of, of back and forth meetings with the Planning Board, really getting their input, their review. Um, they did give a unanimous recommendation and, um, you can see that the, there's a lot of changes. There's all, all the red is pretty much everything that's new. A lot of the idea behind it was to make sure that everything that had happened in legislative sessions had been, since two thousand and six, has, has been updated. Um, that's what that first section of the memo really talks about and there's such minimal changes. Um, although what I'm hearing about this legislative session, Noel might have to do an update sooner rather than later. Um, so I'm not going to go through those, but I did want to talk about just the idea of some of the big-ticket items that got addressed throughout the regulations that I think are going to be, um, helpful to Noel, but also just a benefit to the community and make sure that, um, you know, that we're not only, you know, helping, aiding developers in what they need to do, but they're also, um, doing what they need to do for the community, which I think was sometimes easy to get overlooked. Um, one of the first things that we've clarified is what happens in the event where there are multiple application processes that are required as a part of a subdivision. Um, there wasn't a real clear process that was outlined if you were having to go through annexation of zone change and subdivision. And I think probably given the last several months, um, you know, you guys have seen through firsthand experience what happens when the cart gets before the horse. Um, so now there is language that, um, that will allow for a certain process to happen and basically knock out annexation and zone change prior to subdivision application. Um, with the nature of zoning, how it affects density and lot sizes, that can majorly affect a subdivision and what a preliminary plot looks like and how it takes shape. So that really, that's not only a benefit to the community itself, but it's really looking out for the developer as well because, you know, I now know more than anyone how costly consultant fees can be. And so, um, you know, if, if they pay an engineer to go through and develop something that's not even going to conform to a zone change that they may or may not get, um, you know, they're going to be out, out of money a lot. Um, so I, it's just a good, clear process there. Um, one of the other things that, you know, I always struggled with, I know Noel shares the same sentiments, is we had incredibly, we, this community had incredibly had thresholds for, um, when a traffic study was required. Basically, if you had, you would have to have, um, a fifty-lot major subdivision. Well, gosh, in six years, there hasn't been a fifty-lot major subdivision in this town before a traffic study was required. And that's just too much, that's not the kind of development that Laurel is seeing. And so, um, now, uh, the, the recommendation that's in this document is that all major subdivisions are going to require a traffic study. Um, that may sound like a lot, but it, it, it's really not. Where Laurel is growing and where subdivisions have been in the past, they're on streets that are a lot of times already built out. People feel like there's already a lot of traffic on them and, you know, we just have to say, well, we don't know what kind of impact this subdivision is going to have on these roads. Um, you know, if you think about Maryland and, and that area out there, you know, we just don't know what level of service it is or, or what a subdivision or a development, um, release or rent could do to those kind of roads. So, um, it may sound like that's a huge change, but it's really, hopefully again, for the benefit of the community. The importance of that traffic study also kind of leads into another section. Um, there has always been a section in the Laurel subdivision regulations that talked about off-site improvements. So for instance, if you're, if you're going to, um, build a subdivision, let's just say off of Maryland. And, um, there was a structure that was in place, very vague structure, that basically said, if you're going to have an impact on the road that's providing you access, you might be assessed money for it. You know, if you have to put in a, a stop sign or, um, a stoplight. For instance, Walmart had to do that, they actually had to upgrade the traffic signal at Southeast Fourth and First. That was an example of a time when a developer had to do an off-site improvement. Um, while there was a structure in there, it wasn't very clear. Um, now, uh, we've taken what, um, what Mako and LEAGUE say are, you know, the ideal way of addressing off-site improvements and we've put a structure in place with a formula that will take what the traffic study says and determine what that subdivision's proportion is. So for instance, it's, it may not always be appropriate to make an improvement at that time. Um, you know, especially if you think about streets and if you go from a wide street that doesn't have shoulders, doesn't have curb, and then all of a sudden you're going to narrow it in with no transition zone and you're going to have curb in the middle of an area that doesn't typically have it, sometimes it's not the best thing to all of a sudden, uh, make that improvement at that time. You know, sometimes you need more before, before you can do it safely. So if a situation, if a situation like that occurs, what now happens is there's a formula that will determine what their monetary share will be of those overall improvements. Um, obviously there is, if, if that becomes a condition of approval through the subdivision review process, the money, I mean, there will be administration of how that money gets held at the city, but, um, it does go back in to those improvements and those improvements only. Um, Lewis and Clark really is where this model was developed and it was developed through multiple lawsuits. So, uh, you know, a lot of the legal counsel feels like it's now to a place where it's really been thought through several times and the holes have hopefully been shaken out. So that is in there and, and I think that's going to be a huge help because if you listen to the discussions that the Planning Board is having, you know, they're saying, well, we know we're having impacts on these roads, but we don't exactly know what they are and how can we make the developer participate and really pony up where they shouldn't be ponying up? So this gives them some tools that if they choose to do through conditions of approval, they can do that. Um, the other, the other thing which I think is going to be really good for Laurel in the long term, especially as hopeful, hopefully as the city grows, I mean, I think that's what we all hope happens. Um, Yellowstone County, Billings actually started this before we even kicked this project off, but, um, the city of Billings and Yellowstone County started working on crafting what they call suburban subdivision regulations. And it was basically going to be for the areas immediately outside of the city of Billings. Um, basically creating a transitional area where, you know, if, if the Planning Board is reviewing a subdivision that's out at the, the outer limits of the planning area, you know, maybe it's down off of, um, off of Thiel Road or, you know, even where like River Ranch Retreat subdivision is, um, you know, they're more rural in nature. And so, you know, curb and gutter, those things aren't important. But last time I looked at our city limits here, you know, we've got all sorts of jagged, um, city limits boundaries. We've got parcels that can be developed that are in between that will be surrounded on three sides by the city. And to have total rural, rural standards for that area, it doesn't make annexation easy because our annexation policy says you have to be built to city standards in order for us to be able to accept you. So if you're in the zoning area for the city of Laurel, you have a little bit tighter standards that you have to conform to as it, as it relates to road widths, stormwater, um, especially as it relates to drainage wells, um, curb and gutter sidewalks. So that hopefully in the future, as areas in different neighborhoods are able to be, able to be annexed, it's not starting at a total rural standard and saying, well, you know, please, you have all these improvements to make before we can even consider. I mean, they're basically going to be halfway there by, by the incorporation of these, um, suburban subdivision regulations. So that doesn't necessarily affect you guys as far as subdivisions that you'll be reviewing because the county commissioners will still be responsible for any subdivisions in that area. But in the long term, as the city grows and is able to annex, those areas will be in much better shape than some of the others currently in town. So I think those are really the high parts that I wanted to address. I also wanted to let you know that both legal councils, um, Dan with Yellowstone County, Dan Schwartz, the, um, civil attorney there, and then also Sam Painter, you know, they have reviewed drafts long before it ever went to the Planning Board. So, um, as far as any sort of legal council oversight, they're on board with the draft that's in front of you. Noel did mention that the county commissioners have to adopt this document as well. These are joint subdivision regulations. It's really important that both governing bodies adopt the same version or else there's going to be two documents floating out there. Um, but we had initially been on, on the, are scheduled for the commissioners for, um, discussion this Thursday and then hopefully adoption next Tuesday. Mako has taken them out of town, so we're now a look behind, um, will be on their discussion next Tuesday. But, uh, we are pretty much trying to run a, a concurrent adoption process, so. Lots of exciting reading. I'm sure you'll read through it line by line and, uh, yeah, there's any, any questions.
Councilor Dickerson. Thank you. If a subdivision is set up in a manner, uh, like maybe it's got businesses or whatever, and it's evaluated and to these regulations and so forth, and later on down the road, it changes the venue as far as a different type of business, uh, with a different style of traffic, so be or whatever, will that, the new business be grandfathered or will that be reevaluated to the new specifications as far as what that business is going to have as far as the traffic, uh, pattern or types of businesses it's going, going to be? Even though once it's been accepted this way, now somebody else has come in, it's a different type, how will that be handled?
Sure, so since these are subdivision regulations, the only time this is going to apply is the time that parcels are created. So, you know, when people come in and they apply for a subdivision, they have to tell you what their intent for use is. And so, you know, we'll know if it's industrial or commercial or whatever, generally speaking. The traffic manual or Uniform Traffic Control Manual where all of these, um, uh, trips per day are determined that will be incorporated into the traffic studies will be based on whatever that developer says at the time. When it comes to businesses changing over time and how that can affect traffic, um, whether a business is allowable or not will be handled through zoning and if it's, if it's allowable in that zoning district at the time. But if there's increases to traffic, um, anything in these regulations won't, won't affect them because again, it's only when the land itself is being divided that we can employ these tools.
So it's almost like a grandfather clause, what it is, it is no matter what changes to be.
Mm-hmm, so long as it's allowable by them.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, council? Councilor Nelson.
Just a quick question and statement. So this is, we'll actually replace, um, chapter sixteen in the LMC, correct?
Yes.
And everything that's been struck here is, is what's currently in. Chapter sixteen and then what's not struck in red is what's, will be deleted.
All underlined text is what's new and everything that's struck is what will be deleted. So, um, there's actually a clean version of this that, that's floating around that once it goes into the municipal code, you know, it'll be clean and won't show up.
Yeah, I, I would just like to say that I think it's, it's, um, it's time to, to, uh, to go through this. I'm glad to see that this is, uh, being undertaken. Um, it's taken a hundred and seven years for Laurel to get to, um, sixty-eight hundred, uh, seven thousand, um, population, uh, figure and it's not going to take another hundred and seven years for Laurel to get to thirteen thousand, eight hundred or fourteen thousand, uh, in, in population. So, um, it's going to be more important, I think, as time progresses here in the near future that we, uh, plan and are better prepared, which looks like this is going to be, I'm glad to see it in front of us.
Yeah, I'd have to tell you just to lighten the mood a little bit, but I can remember when I was still a staff planner here and I thought, you know, one day some poor consultant is going to, is going to update these. And I, I never intended for it to be me and when I applied for the CDVG grant, I was still a staff planner here and I thought, oh, that poor soul, turns out that poor soul is me.
Tagged.
Don't feel sorry for her. Yeah. Don't feel so bad.
Nonetheless, we all wanted to understand. Councilmember Dickerson? Clarification, did you say poor soul or important soul?
Poor, poor, very poor.
Well, important, so that's why I wanted to clarify. Any other questions? Thank you, Monica.
Yeah, thank you guys, nice to see you.
Okay, council issues. Guess my name's on here, what I wanted to do is talk about, uh, the combination of the tree board and cemetery commission and the park board. See and saw those are all different groups now and how they would fit together. I know that Heidi and Sam have been working on this.
No, I talked to Sam yesterday about it because I read on the agenda, I got a little concerned. And, um, he is looking for some guidance from you. Um, he, if, if you want to combine all three, then that's going to be, take, you know, that's, that's one legal aspect of it. If you decide you want to combine all three, that's a different legal aspect. And then if you decide that you're interested in, um, I know that the Hubert Works Director has talked to multiple boards about this, about making these citizen advisements need to be placed. to be placed on the agenda or not, so I guess he needs, 'cause, you know, I was a little concerned that he hadn't gotten this done either, and so, he's looking for some direction from you all as to what specifically you want done.
Councilor Dickerson?
Thank you. In our Park Board meeting, if I might, we discussed this quite a bit, and what we would like to do and see done is each of these committees, or boards, or whatever you wanna call, come together and have a meeting, everybody together, to discuss how, you know, we wanna try to do this, that there, it's gonna be a type of advisory board that's gonna handle all three entities, it's not gonna be set to where one's gonna be more important than the other, and we're trying to decide, you know, like, if we wanna have seven or nine persons on that without a council person being on it, but they will take into consideration the items that affect the city in those three manners, as far as how to be addressed, and they would advise it as an advisory board as to how parks could be enhanced by the tree, by the trees, and the tree would be able to end up knowing what's going on and suggest maybe what kind of trees or whatever that would be needed. And it's something that, to try to get more people involved by combining them instead of having three different entities, that you got a hard, hard time getting people involved on, and you don't have enough people there. So, I think that's the first thing we wanted to try to accomplish, was to get, see the three boards come together and discuss how it could be done, number of people and so forth, and maybe go from there to see if it's even a possibility, you know, going forward, if that's kinda what you're looking for.
No, well, I mean, I guess if that's what you want to do, that's great. He's looking more for, you know, these are, these boards are created by ordinance, and so it's gonna be the, you'll have to dissolve one ordinance, or all three ordinances, or whatever you decide to do, and then create a new ordinance, and so, you'll have to go through all of those ordinance processes, but, you know, are you looking at citizen advisory? Are you looking at council run? You know, these boards are still going to be held within the parameters of a budget they don't control, and so, I know that that creates mass amount of frustration for all of them, but, you know, the, our limited impacts, and so, you know, there really just isn't a ton of, but there isn't a ton of money for any of these departments, you know, we barely can take care of the living, so it's tough to put money into the cemetery when there's no additional fees coming in, which by, you know, there's no perpetual care. So, you know, there's a lot of roadblocks there, and so, how do you, you know, and the Tree Board is essentially run by a grant, you know, when we get the Arbor Day grants and the Tree Grants, and so, I guess, how are you, how are you looking for these boards to function? How are you looking for them to operate? It's hard for us to write, or for me to help Sam write something if I don't know what you're looking for.
Well, I see the board, I see them kinda functioning almost in the same manner as far as budgetary, because if you have something that addresses the Cemetery Committee, or if you have something that addresses the Tree Board or the Park Board, that advisory board is gonna come to you and say, "This is what we would like to see done at the cemetery, and this is what the advisory board recommends." Well, at that time, the cemetery has a budget, and if it fits within those budget, the Cemetery budgetary constraints, that's a possibility it can be done. It's the same way with the Park Board. You know, you still wanna have your three budgets, but it's gonna be recommended by the advisory board as to which area wants to be addressed, and how much money is gonna be required for that particular board commission to use from the budget.
Well, right now, we don't have any additional funds for them to use. I mean, our park budget and cemetery budget are generally just an operating budget at this point. We scrape together enough funds to operate the parks, you know, we mow the water, you know, and then, like Elena is, in a very opportunistic situation with their SID, where, you know, we can ask them, or if we have additional funds, you know, we plant the trees, if they wanna put in playground equipment, they need to come back and ask you to raise that SID, and so, there just isn't, isn't that money within the regular budget, and so, I'm just looking for direction.
But there's not gonna be any more money required than what's already there?
I know, I just don't want, I don't want people to feel discouraged, and that's what the Public Works Director is telling me that he's often feeling when he comes from the Park Board, because they have wonderful ideas, and you all want to do wonderful things for the community, we're just so constrained, and so...
We are discouraged, and we're not the only committee or board that is discouraged, and that's why we're not getting any more interest in whatever in it, because nothing is being done by combining them and maybe working together for the importance of what needs to be done. You know, that's what, that's what we're, that's what we're looking at. Yeah, it's really discouraging, because you got the ideas, you got the master plan, you got things that you wanna see done, but we can't, because there's always roadblocks there as far as, like, leases in the park, or, you know, down at Riverside Park. We're about two and a half to three years, and we still, you know, are trying to get those taken care of, just so we know where we're going, what we're gonna do, and what it's gonna take.
Oh, I completely understand, I'm just, I just need the best clarification I can get to help, to help facilitate what you're looking for. I wanna bring you a document that works.
Well, this would be a good meeting if we could get it put together, a good meeting that if you could attend it, you could maybe hear the input from the various groups.
You need the attorney to attend.
What's that?
You also need the attorney to attend. I can't change the ordinance, he writes, he writes legal documents, so he would need to be there as well.
Well, no, but if you had an idea of what we're trying to accomplish, that could be, that could be taken to the attorney, because as it is, we have a hard time getting here for a lot of things anyway, point blankly, you know? So, you're the closest, and that's what we'd like to end up. Do you wanna know what direction we wanna take? Come to the meeting with us and hear what kind of directions we want that you can take to Sam.
Councilman Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a thought that perhaps we could have some sort of a retreat with the chairs from the three entities that we're talking about now, the Tree and Park and Cemetery, as one thought, discussing some of the mechanics of this and trying to bounce some ideas and what might work and what might not work, and then lay that out, as Chuck was saying, as something that we could present to Sam, or at least as a beginning before, I don't think Sam would need to be involved until we have some sort of an idea of what it is that we would be looking at if those entities were combined. Personally, I'd like to, I would like to see, personally, I would like to hope to see someday parks being able to capture, like, a little bit of funds from the dog and cat licenses, just for some seed money. I'd like to, I really would think that the parks are terribly underutilized, and I would like to see the board try to find a mechanism and a way to get, to draw activities into the parks, as far as car shows and art shows and things that, and music venues, and the things that I see everybody is doing in Billings at their parks, there's a revenue stream that they could generate, and then I would like to see something similar to the Cemetery Commission, where the Park Board would be able to capture a percentage of those funds, be it a 50-50 split or not, but, so that they have funds now starting, or a mechanism to generate revenue for capital improvements, to do some of the things that perhaps can generate more income. So, but I think it's a process that we should spend whatever requisite time it takes to see if it's something that we can make work, and if so, how would we make that work, and then, as you stated, how would that be structured, and obviously, council would have oversight. Would there be any mechanism for any kind of agenda setting or agenda preference from the city to be able to have them look at, that we may identify that they maybe haven't? So, the structure would be important on how that's put together, and I realize there's other entities, there's other cities that we can draw from on structure, but I don't know if that's, if that would be a beginning to try to get, you know, chairs together to discuss goals or to understand that a meeting now might run three hours? We have, I just chaired a Cemetery Commission meeting that ran an hour. If we have a Park Board that also is Cemetery Board and the Tree Board, that may be a two hour, or maybe it's reality, and...
And then you lose people.
Wouldn't, I wouldn't wanna see business not attended to because of the desire to keep a meeting short, so.
And on that note, I would probably bring forward that the reason and the whole idea behind this was to not get burned out at all the meetings, so. But we're, we need to get, we need to get all the crowd here, and what Heidi's trying to do is trying to figure out what way you wanted to go. It should be something that should be on the next agenda, so that we can touch bases with it and bring back some ideas you might wake up some morning and have. You, Councilor Sills?
The whole thing started to gather, because we had so many council, we had, there's five council spots on two of the boards, and kinda wanted to group them together, so everybody didn't get burned out, and we've been looking at the Billings one, and how they run it, it's very, it seems like it's very well organized, very well run, and I think that's where you're talking about, you know, you have an hour here, two hours here, and combine them like to three hours, and the big thing is, you know, whatever, however it's run, it has to be run with, this is how much time you're gonna have for city, this is how much time you're gonna have for Parks Board, this is how much time you're gonna have for Cemetery, and have it fly, because it seems to me so many times, even with the Parks Board, people just start talking about everything else, and the procedures aren't really followed, and that's gonna have to be the big thing when we combine them, because I think that's what really needs done, is combine them, and we have to stick to agendas and just go with it.
You gotta get one of these?
Yeah. And I'm guilty, and I'm just as guilty as anybody, but I don't, I let people go, and we have to stop it.
Same.
Exactly. And I think it's a good idea, though, I mean, it really needs to be done, but it just has to be precise enough correctly.
So, where do we go from here?
I think that we really need to have Sam and, you know, get together and have Chuck come along and sit down and talk about what we really wanna do, we have to stay. We've already got the Parks Board meeting all of us sat down, and it seems like a great idea, just which way do we wanna run? Whether do we wanna have city council open up, or do we wanna have just the citizens and advisory committee?
Okay, a couple questions. How many, I could look it up, how many members total are we talking about in all three boards right now?
Well, that can be decided as to what, what you're gonna call it, if it's an advisory board or whatever.
No, 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 I just mean, five in yours?
We're short now, we need a council person and a...
No, I just kinda, I didn't have my committee list, I could've looked it up. I just wanted to know how many.
Seven on the Cemetery Commission.
Seven.
Park Board is?
Seven.
Five.
Five.
There's five, no, but we got two boards.
Five. Seven and five, and then the Tree Board, which is another, what, three?
Three.
Cause you're looking at like, maybe 12 or 15 people that sit down in a room and decide how you wanna do this, to do it with all...
I like Tom's idea as far as...
Or do the heads, I think something needs to be, so we get off, talking about, "Let's do it, let's do something to get it done." So, I like the idea of the heads, because 15 people, you're not gonna be able to run very good meeting, but the heads would probably do a good job.
Well, that's one thing, and then that way, they could take them back to their respective committees and say, "This is what we talked about," and everything, to their own individual groups, they're like, say, have 12 or 15 people.
So, I think you guys need to organize a meeting of those committee heads, and then have that discussion and see where you are, where you wanna direct Heidi and Sam. Cause you can run through the, you know, obviously, the alternatives of an advisory board without council, or committees with council, or whatever, you can run through all those options with those heads and try and decide where they feel they should be. Councilor Nelson?
I just would like to add that, and I agree with what Doug is saying, and it reminded me that the mayor has the ability to appoint temporary boards, so you could appoint an exploratory committee for the formation or for the...
The consolidation, right.
And for the possibility of combining now the Tree, Park, and Cemetery Board, and with the chairs meeting at, you know, what time they can find, you know, the works for them. I don't, I don't think this is anything that should be rushed into, or, or, you know, we should take our time, and we may, after three meetings or four meetings, say, "This is not gonna work, we just don't feel, we just don't keep these things as they are now," or we might, we might find a different path and have a different discussion to bring to the council. Thank you.
Why don't, why don't you folks that are working on those committees, we'll have a section on this next, the next work session, and see where we're at. Heidi, I don't, I don't believe it's necessary to appoint anybody, as long as, you know, who that group of people is that's gonna work and frame stuff forward.
Councilor Dickerson?
Thank you. Well, either you or Heidi contact the Tree Board and see if we can get a representative there, cause I think Luann, who is the chairperson on that, there is one council person on that, and she is out of state for a period of time.
Right. And they get a ton of staff support. They get a lot of staff support, the Tree Board does, because they meet at 10 o'clock in the morning, so they meet during normal business hours, so they get Public Works Director and the Maintenance Superintendent, and whoever else they meet that may be planting the trees, so they get, they get a lot of staff support.
Any other questions? That'll be on the agenda of this work session. Update on the 2011 Yellowstone River Plague?
Well, as you all can see, guys, jam has not broken. Today was our meeting about progress on the intake. There's projected a quote titled wave that is supposed to come through tomorrow that should break that jam. What you have to wait for is for the ice to be lifted up, and the river elevation, or the river level is high, and then the force of the water that comes from the basin comes down and pushes it all out, which is good and bad. The good is that the river level will then immediately drop, and hopefully their sandbags and work area will become exposed again, and they can start working on the intake. The bad is what destruction will that cause. You know, we just got it in bank on the south side of the river, you know, the water treatment plant is a little exposed, it has taken, we had a pretty big wave come through about three years ago that took some of the sandbags and rocks that had been built up from 2011 out, so, you know, we're... of the sandbags and rocks that had been built up from 2011 out, so we're a little concerned about the water treatment plant. But we need that elevation to go down. The date of substantial completion is growing faster and faster to April. And they need five solid weeks in the river to complete that intake. And they have been granted a short extension, so it's not April first, it's like April eleventh now or something, for substantial completion and that intake being online. We picked that date because, again, we're looking out for the safety of the workers. We can't be in that river during runoff and this project has to get done before the fall. Just, we can't go through another summer with this. And so, you know, everybody's getting a little hairy, a little frazzled, want to get this done, want to see the river drop. But, you know, there's nothing we can, nothing we can do until the water receives and they find out that there's been any damage to their copper dam and get those pumps back out there and see what can be done. They were out in the river last week on Monday, and I don't know if you remember last Monday, but it was bitterly cold. And, you know, the wind chill was about twenty below down there and I was standing out there thinking, what the heck am I doing out here? They were trying to pump the water out of the holes to even see if there's anything left, but obviously it's filling in faster than they could pump. And then, you know, other contractors that knew they were in the river called them and asked them what the heck they were doing, that this had become such a dangerous situation that, you know, as soon as you heard the ice crack, it was too late. So they will not be back in the river until the jam breaks. And then you have the pipeline project that has been hung up and gone slower than anticipated because with the river elevation being so high and all that swamp, they're having to de-water as they're putting the pipe in. And so that makes the process longer. When I was out there on Friday, they had eight excavators working, eight. And so that has to be the whole list of brother's fleet. I can't imagine that a company that size has more than eight excavators and mini axes. And, I mean, that doesn't even include the twenty-five men that were working, the dump trucks. So, I mean, they have pretty much every crew and every piece of heavy equipment that they have up here trying to lay that pipe. So, you know, we're plugging along, but it's been a true winter and, you know, we really need that water to go down. And so it eventually will, just hope that it goes down, they can get in and work on it before runoff hits. Any questions?
Okay, move on to the next item, four other items, so are there any other? Did you draft council agenda for February twenty-one? While you're cruising that, I'd like to ask, item six, attendance, February twenty-first meeting. You all do feel like you're going to be here at this time? Item seven is announcements. Council President Pales?
I don't have anything in your eye.
Councilmember Hurd?
Yes, sir. The, I'd like to just thank, or whatever, I see we've got twenty-seven thousand dollars from the Parks Department for a master plan study.
Yes, we were successful in obtaining our fixed grid trust fund grant. And so our intent with that was to apply for the grant so that the master plan could be completed. And then with the master plan being completed, we could utilize the Exxon money that may be distributed to our area for actual projects instead of having to delete the master plan with that money. We could actually implement a project. We were awarded, I asked Indy to put that letter in, so we were awarded the money last week. We're having a brief meeting tomorrow morning with Sue Taylor from Veritute RC&amp;D about the contract speed and getting that deleted and then to council and sign as quick as possible so that, like I said, when the money is released from Exxon, we can say, hey, look, we're showing ready, we have a project, let's go. That's our plan.
Okay. The second item is that meeting tomorrow night at six o'clock at the Red Lion concerning that twelve million dollar and the possibility of another grant, park possibly coming out of that, so be something worthy to attend. Thank you, that's all I have.
Councilmember Stokes?
Councilmember Hurd?
Councilmember Montzier?
I have nothing in your eye.
Councilmember Stokes, Brandon Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just that we don't have a Nelson intake item on the agenda because there really isn't anything, but I'd just like everybody to know that we don't have anything negative in the outlook at this time, so that is good news. So, that's all I have to say.
Councilmember Dickerson?
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay, item eight, recognition of employees. There's no other items? We can adjourn? Thank you. Thank you, Hurd. Yes, sir, thank you.